There is a second sheet over there. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to start the public hearing. I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the Town and Village Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee to the very first public hearing. This is being held by the Update Committee. And the purpose this evening is basically to get public comment on the revision, and I'll go into a little more detail in a minute after we do the pledge. So I'd like everyone to please rise for the pledge. If you're just coming in, there are signup sheets on the table just by the door, okay? I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Thanks for braving the rain. At least we're not having a snowstorm like last week. I'd like to introduce the members of the Town and Village Comprehensive Planning Revision Committee. To this point, after the last two years, this committee collectively has put in over 1,200 hours of volunteer time, working both at the town office complex on the first Tuesday of every month, and then also working from home, to put together basically the plan as we're going to present it, and hopefully you've read this evening. I'd like to introduce, representing the town, from the Town Planning Board, Paul Andreessen. From the Town Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Samantha Diedrich. From the Village Planning Board, Jeffrey Helmut. From the Village Board, trustee Jeanne Meyer. Pat Fitzsimmons, who is our Town Comprehensive Planning Board Chairman, is not with us this evening. He's in, I think, South Carolina on a vacation that was previously scheduled. Jerry Marzak, who acts as a representative from the Conservation Advisory Commission, had foot surgery on Friday, and he's basically home recovering from that. We have other members from the Village Board, David Minch, who I don't think he's here yet, but David Minch represents the Village Historic District Review Board, and also from the village, Alexander Wade. The consultants, who have been working with us, basically to take our work and put it in the package that you've seen on the website, and also at the library, if you possibly picked up at Town Hall, is Dan Schuster from Schuster Associates, who's also our town planner, and Alan Sorenson from Planet Main Street Incorporated. The comprehensive plan, as it existed, was this document. This is what we started with. This was written July 1, 1999. And it was made up and composed by people who lived in the village and town, who were appointed by the Town and Village Boards back in 1999. When we started this process, the committee took this document and said, "Okay, there's no pictures. There aren't too many maps or charts in here. There's a lot of information here that's changed over the last 20-some years," basically. And we took the goals that were written then, and basically decided what we would go forward with. Each member of the committee was given basically a homework assignment, starting back two years ago, to review the goals, take a look at what ordinances and regulations that have been approved, either on the village level or the town level, that would have an impact on the plan. Things that didn't exist in 1999. Local laws that have been passed. Because all of these things are part of what makes up the Town and Village of Sawgadis, what makes up the plan. The committee then did their homework. Basically, they revised sections. We've added sections to basically meet the community's needs that have come from workshops that the CPC has had, workshops that have been conducted, you know, information brought to the village and to the town. And basically then took a look at comments that were made at the public informational meeting that was held in November. And, you know, it's a draft, it's a work in progress. So comments that came from those of you who attended the meeting at the library, the committee incorporated that. What we're doing this evening is hopefully getting response, you know, what you like about it, what you don't like about it, things that maybe this group hasn't even thought of yet, that you think you'd like to include in a vision of where the town and community will be going in the years ahead. So your comments tonight, it's not a dialogue. We're here to get your input. Hopefully, everybody's read it. If you can refer to a page reference or to a goal that you're commenting on, that would be very helpful. We have a professional stenographer here with us this evening, and she's going to be Beth Shalay Newton, and Beth is going to be recording this, just so that we also have TV 23 here tonight, too. So that when we go back to our next meeting, which is going to be April 2, that's our workshop meeting, we'll be able to have a hard copy, and also refer back to a video if we need to. So we don't want to miss any of your comments. The next workshop, as I said, is April 2. We meet at the planning conference room at Town Hall, and our workshops begin at 7:00. This is where we've been meeting for the last two years. You know, I'd invite anybody, if you'd like to come, and just sit in as an observer, or if you want to comment, we do have public comment time at those workshops. You know, I'd welcome, I'd love to have you there. So at this point, I'll go over some of the basic procedures for this evening. Basically, the signup sheets, if you're just coming in, please sign. We're asking that everyone, when you come up to the podium, to state your name, address, are you a village resident, town resident. Each speaker will have three minutes, and to address your comments, we're asking you not to relinquish your time at the end of the process of going through the folks. If we have additional time, you can come back up and have another comment if you'd like to. So please state your name, your address, if you're a village or town resident. Please speak into the microphone. We did test it. If you've been to town board meetings, you know sometimes those mics are a little temperamental. So hopefully, it's working. Direct your comments to the committee. These are our committee members right here, and, you know, we'll be taking notes also. And if you, you know, think about tonight, maybe tonight you're not here to comment, but you're here to listen, and you're going to go home and take a look at it online, or go to the library and sit down with the manual that's over there and look at it, and maybe next week you say, "You know what? I think this needs to be tweaked." Or perhaps, "We should look at this." You can submit your comments in writing to the committee. You can leave it at Town Hall, or you can email it to CPC, Harris Sawgadis. You drop it off in my mailbox, I'm right across the street from the library. So, you know, if you have other thoughts that you'd like to share, please do that, and we're asking that the comments are in by March 29, which is two weeks from Friday. So that way, we'll have them to discuss at our April workshop. Okay, Mr. Andreessen is going to be our time taper this evening. And Paul, could you, want to call up the first group?
We'll go on the list that was handed out. First speaker will be Mike Harkaby, followed by Joellen Donnelly.
Good evening. Mike Harkaby, from variable 302, old group 32, in the Town Sawgadis. First, I want to thank the committee, the Update Committee, for all the work he's done. And, can you hear me?
No.
Push the buttons.
There you go.
Does it feel like it's on? Okay, here we go. I wanted to thank you for the work you've done, and the openness of the process that you've done. I want to make a few specific comments about the process, and then speak to one particular section of the comprehensive plan. I think that special thanks should be extended to the Hudson Valley Greenway, whose $15,000 in financial assistance helped to hire a professional planner, who elicited the goals of our citizens and helped to navigate the committee through any technical land use issues. The Greenway has been essential in many projects throughout Sawgadis that have benefited all our residents without ever interfering with individual property rights. The Greenway awarded grants that have helped the Glasgow Mini Park upgrades, scenic bike tours, the Hudson River Trail at the Glasgow Riverfront Park, revisions to the zoning law, consulting fees for wetlands, mapping of habitats. They've done work with the Asopis Creek Conservancy Footbridge. All of these projects have helped all of the residents. We've benefited from all of them, and they haven't interfered with anyone's property rights. So I feel that the Greenway should be acknowledged in this process. Specifically, I want to comment on Section 9.20, which I'll read. It says, "Permit development of gaming casinos only after analysis that demonstrates significant positive fiscal benefit to the town and its residents, such as property taxes and job creation, and demonstration that negative social and environmental impacts are fully mitigated." Years ago, as you all remember, we went through a fight against the ciding of a casino in Sawgadis. Across all political lines and all leaderships, Sawgadis came out saying, "We don't want the ciding of a casino in Sawgadis." That was the strong voice of the community. I don't think there's any place in our comprehensive plan for anything that gives the hint that this community wants, what does it say again?
Twenty seconds.
Wants a casino. So I would like to see Section 9.20 removed from the update to the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Joellen Donnelly, followed by Robert Cooper.
I'm going to speak for my husband, just because it takes him so long to get to the microphone. And that's the reason we're here. We used to have a farm outside of Sawgadis. We now live on Bird Street, which is really Route 9W. And due to multiple sclerosis, my husband is now limited to a cane and a mobility vehicle. We moved into the village because we wanted to be proximate to services and doing business with local business people. And that hasn't been a reality. We take our life in our hands. I was so excited when I heard that the planning board had done the proposed complete streets policy, and I've been working in other communities in Warren County and Washington County on complete streets, as a community activist, as a health professional. I'm a health coach and a community educator. My dream is to get rid of diabetes, heart disease, and I know the best way to do it is to get people up and moving. So an important part of this comprehensive plan is the policy. You can't just have a bake sale to change things, you've got to change policy. Policy's difficult for the people that have to make it, and policy's difficult for the people that have to live with the change. But you've got to put policy in that mandates these things, or the first time there's a budget cut, it won't happen. And the complete streets, for those of you that haven't read it, is a profound difference. If you drive through Asopis, if you go to Glen's Falls, Glen's Falls didn't look like that 10 years ago, nor did Saratoga. I did a lot of work on all of them. What can happen to the traffic in this village and this town can be profound. People will begin to walk, get up and get moving. They'll have destinations to go to. But it has to be a policy, not a wishful thinking. And it takes courage to do that, because you suffer the slings and arrows, as they say, of people who are against policy change. I'd like to speak more profoundly, but I know we have less time. But really take a look at this, from your heart and from the livability of this community. We came here by choice. We had a beautiful horse farm outside of town. We want to be in the village, but we want it livable, so we can stay here till the day we die. We don't want to be snobbers that move to Florida. They're moving to Florida because it's hard to get around up here. It's not just the weather, you can't get out. I want to keep that rich culture of our baby boomers in this community. We need infrastructure in order to do that, or I'm going to see a lot of these faces leaving here in the next few years, and I don't want that. I like the diversity and the culture that we have here.
Josephine Muteles, followed by Suzanne LeBlanc.
I actually have a lot, so I won't read it all, I'll just submit it, because I have a lot of comments on different sections. Thanks for all your hard work. First, I'll address tourism. I think it's great when people speak of Sawgadis as charming, unique, cool. They are not referring to chain stores and gas stations, they are referring to the village. New businesses have moved into the village and brought vitality like this town hasn't seen in 40 years. You have one kind restaurant, stores, historic homes, unique bed and breakfast, rural beauty. That's why tourists come, and tourism has become a million-dollar industry. People come from around the world because we're different. We have a community identity. We're not anywhere USA. This is all preliminary to my comments, sorry. Second, I'll talk about business in general. This plan pays lip service to preserving Sawgadis' small-town character, its history, its businesses. But a lot of the suggestions in Goals 6 and 9 change that direction. If you read this plan carefully, you can see all kinds of loopholes. The plan says that commercial development should conform to surrounding or nearby land uses, 5.3 and 9.12, or conform to neighboring properties, 9.16. But on gateway roads, nearby developments, our gas stations, national chain stores, franchises, so in effect, the plan is steering new commercial development to be more strip development, more chain stores, et cetera. We have regulations for commercial development in the Gateway Overlay District, therein are zoning laws. The planning board has been misinterpreting the law, or ignoring it, or just doesn't understand it, and this plan makes it even more confusing. In 9.19, the plan wants retail that attracts a larger market. 9/11 refers to adding more retail stores, and 919 wants businesses of all sizes. That's inviting anything every which way. Someone can trade, pick those three goals and say, "Oh, this town wants malls," or "This town wants a smelly candle factory." I like to see the goals be specific. We have to have a clear vision of what Sawgadis wants. No one wants traffic lights, more traffic lights. No one wants to pay for wider roads. No one wants to pay for maintaining those huge roads. No one wants higher property taxes to pay for more government spending. No one wants bigger government. This plan says to avoid strip development. Avoid it, but at least four of the goals invite it. 9.11, 9.12, 9.16, 9.19. An expanded commercial development, how good is it for a town? Take the town of Ulster. You'd think with all the miles of billion-dollar malls, you'd think those businesses provide a huge tax base. Homeowners should pay back the nothing in property taxes. Well, it's not true. Single-family homes in town of Ulster pay higher property taxes than we do.
Time is up?
I just have, all right, Jen? Okay. So anyway, can I just say I have suggestions for rewording, go 5, 6, all different goals in 6 and 9? And I can?
If that's a copy, we can take it.
I can, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Mark Knaus, next, followed by David Gilmore.
I'm Mark Knaus, the Town Sawgadis. I have just a few comments regarding the comprehensive plan. I want to thank the committee for their efforts, as I see some changes have been made since the last meeting. However, some things haven't changed, and there's even one surprising new addition to the comprehensive plan. I see where there's a discussion and a history of the forest products industry that's now part of the plan, and it seems to be the recommendation for loggers to follow best management practices instead of being singled out for some special regulation, which is an improvement. I'm having a problem following best management practices. The committee is still recommending the adoption of an LWRP, which is a local waterfront revitalization plan, which is a mistake, in my opinion. It just is another layer of bureaucracy that is not needed in this town. I don't believe the town should be in the business of advocating for subsidized housing for the young and able-bodied. We have decades of experience, a bankrupt state and federal government, and a lousy economy that reminds us every day what a bad idea government involvement in the housing sector is. And my last observation deals with one of the goals now advocated by the committee, that of casino gaming. And I can't quite decide whether the committee has a sense of humor, or is being deliberately provocative here, because you have a document that proscribes and prescribes all sorts of activities. You want to protect our history, our culture, nature, and then we come down and there's this little tiny paragraph that Mr. Harkaby read permitting casino gaming. And it just, it struck me very, very odd, and actually is kind of humorous, because I could amend that paragraph by, to me anyways, it struck me as humorous, because you could amend it by saying that the Town and Village of Sawgadis are now behind the dynamiting of the community, as long as all of the negative social and environmental impacts are fully mitigated. So, you know, if this has been included to be provocative, to start the community on a conversation regarding casino gambling, then I welcome that. I want the advocates of casino gambling to come forth and bring their arguments, because I'm happy to hear them and engage in that discussion.
Good evening. I'm David Gilmore of Gilmore Planning and Consulting Partner to the Creating Healthy Places Project out of Cornell Cooperative Extension of Ulster County. And I'm here to speak to you tonight, urging you to include complete streets policy within your comprehensive plan. In February of last, or excuse me, in February of this year, the Town Planning Board adopted a complete streets policy, and we were urged to come to this body to urge incorporation of complete streets policy in your plan. I will submit tonight a copy of the resolution, as I understand it was adopted by the Town Planning Board. I will submit my presentation to the Town Planning Board in December of 2012, as well as some cards on complete street, rap cards or descriptive cards of what are complete streets. But I also would say that I am willing to work with this committee to help you incorporate complete streets principles and practices into your general plan. As I see it, it's a general plan. I commend the group on the changes that have been made since the first draft. However, I would suggest, ours is an environmental and policy change project, and I would suggest that complete streets and a way to advance a livable, healthy, and sound community is to advance complete streets policies within the community. And specifically, it's my recommendation that within policy, Goal Number 11, that you incorporate within that goal that it is the intent of the town and village to advance complete street policy to recognize pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and people with disabilities on the same level as motorists in the planning and design of street reconstruction and upgrades, and as part of new street development within the town and village. Basically, it's, complete streets are about streets that enable community transport, and it's about moving people as opposed to just traffic mitigation and concern for automobiles. My suggestion is that there's a lot of focus on traffic mitigation and not on community transportation. Furthermore, I will submit evidence following up this presentation tonight, and I ask if it could be clarified, has the seeker process started? Has there been any scoping for seeker? And if so, could there be clarification of when that is? And then finally, just in terms of metrics for complete streets, I suggest reduced vehicle miles traveled, reduced pedestrian and bicycle injuries due to accidents, and improved road conditions for the full street, for elements like sidewalks and shoulders, street tree canopy, crosswalks, and the full transportation environment. There's plenty of evidence that there can be reductions of injuries within communities, as well as profound benefits, not only to community health and wellness, but to the economy. And I can provide evidence in terms of retail and real estate benefits of approaching a more holistic, complete streets approach within the community. Thank you for your time this evening.
I believe it's Gay McFarlane. Susan Weems, followed by Janet Azagian. And please, when I put this up, when I raise this up here, you've got 20 seconds left, I just want to ensure everybody is within the timeframe. Thank you.
I'm not going to take up much time. I just wanted to, and I'll submit something in writing later, but I wanted to thank you all very much for the work that you're doing. I think it's extremely valuable and important, particularly to those of us on the comprehensive planning committee, because we use the comprehensive plan as our guideline. I'd like to also, I'd like to second the fact that we really need to be very specific about casino and big-box stores. I've come from, I grew up in a very small town in Potsdam, New York, that looked a lot like Sawgadis in some ways, same kind of era. And there was a big fight about Walmart. Walmart won, and people wanted it won. There's a big-box store right outside of town, and you can see the empty, I mean, we know what Sawgadis looked like, was it 20 years ago? You can see the storefronts emptying out, because they can't compete with goods from China, you know? So I would really like to see very specific language that addresses the fact that a casino and a big-box stores are not consistent with what we want for this town. Leave it in Kingston, okay? I also would like to commend you on your strong support of environmental concerns, open space concerns, and I think that it's really, really important for all of us to think about the future. And I know that climate change is something that can be controversial, but I think if we don't think about it, and we don't plan for it, and we don't look at what a town can do in order to prepare for that, then we're not very comprehensive in our plan. And that includes looking at new flood, plane maps. I know Sina Cusson has, I've heard from a good source, that Sina Cusson has some new flood plane maps that we should really look at. And provisions for continuously updating that as things change. Also, sustainable development. Also, sustainable development, sustainable housing, and energy, green energy. So I commend what language you have in there, supporting those goals. And the stronger they can be, the better. So thank you again, and I'll submit some comments in writing later. Thanks.
Hi. I'm very new to, I've been living in Sargades for a couple of years, but I just bought a house here. I think it's a wonderful place. And I work with a group called Sustainable Sargades Transition Town. And I just want to address just the one, goal 14.4, which is about developing clean energy, which is wonderful language, and to suggest that you might possibly also want to consider energy, what transition calls an energy descent plan, which is a long-term, a plan with long-term goals and short-term benchmarks to develop alternative energy and to reduce energy use. It's a very specific plan and Sustainable Sargades would be happy to work with anybody who's interested in that. Thank you very much.
Steve Hubbard, followed by Gaetana Scholonti.
Hi, everybody. Hi. My name is Steve Hubbard. I'm a 40-year resident of the Village of Sargades. I'm a real estate broker, a property manager, and landlord. And I want to thank you for what is, what is obviously an enormous amount of work that you've done and your intentions are, your good intentions are clearly evident. But it seems to me that the comprehensive plan as a concept and as it's addressed in this document that you so carefully put together, is a dangerous concept and a dangerous plan. And the reason I, I think there are two reasons for that. One is that this document will take on a life of its own and it will be subject to the interpretation of people in the future, elected officials, but more importantly, appointed officials who may have their own agenda. And the document is sufficiently vague that it could be interpreted in a wide variety of ways according to some special interest of some person we don't even know about yet somewhere down the road. It's also a dangerous document because it ignores, in fact, if you read it carefully and thoughtfully, it's hard to do, it's a lot of stuff, you see that it ignores, it even steps on, it's stomping on individual rights and individual property rights in particular. And this country is built on individual property rights, individual initiative, the power and importance of the individual, and this document is all about community. And that's fine. There has to be a balance between community concerns and individual rights. But this document ignores completely individual rights in their entirety. I mean, it's so blatant, it's scary to me. And so, there's a solution for both of these flaws. The one that it's subject to a wide variety of interpretation by future folks, some of whom will simply be appointed, and two, the degree to which it ignores and in fact steps all over individual rights. And the solution is that the document begin with, whereas individual property rights are paramount here, and continue on from there. That will give everybody the clue that the community is important, but without the individual and the individual's rights, the community is a wasteland, you're headed right for communism. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Gaetana Scholonti. I want to thank you. I know that you've been working on this. I also wonder though, like, somebody got paid $20,000 to do this and yet I hear how hard everybody's working on it. So, like, how come somebody was paid $20,000 and everybody else is working so hard on it? I kind of don't get that. Anyway, I have concerns with the reason for the comprehensive plan. I kind of don't understand why we have a comprehensive plan. At the sign of, at this, the sign on the corner of Market and Main Street refers to Sargades growing gracefully. This doesn't feel like there's anything graceful about this, the kind of growth that would take place here, if growth at all. This plan is filled with suggestions and regulations and land use control. There continues to be, and I responded to your first draft, it was, I did that in December, but there continues to be nothing in place to promote single-family homes and private property ownership, which is the hallmark of a town and society which is economically viable. This document makes reference to at least three dozen other organizations, studies, regulations, which a reader cannot easily digest. They could spend probably a month to really investigate every reference that is made to another organization or another regulation. It uses terms such as support, encourage, regulate, investigate, and those meanings are very vague and open to interpretation and abuse, and open to abuse. But above all, it sets up a system which governs not by elected officials, it circumvents the process by which we choose our governing officials and replaces them rather by controlling money and by controlling appointed officials, by having appointed officials and appointing groups that will be making the decisions regarding our everyday lives and what's acceptable and what's not. It removes our home rule and certainly removes from us our control over our private property. So I ask you, why, who do you see as being able to designate, who's competent enough to make land use decisions over all of our land? Is there really anyone who can do that? And do we want it? And would we want that? So I'm going to be turning in a lot more specifics, but that's what I want to say tonight, so thank you.
Phyllis Silvers. Hi. My name is Phyllis Silvers. I've lived in Sargades since 2005. My background is grad graduate interior designer trained by architects. My late husband was a civil engineer on the Orange County Planning Board and very involved in Orange County Land Trust. He believed in balanced growth and I was his student. So here I go. I noticed that the access between subdivisions has been limited. And I understand people who are moving into a subdivision wanting their space to be only for those people in their subdivision, but it, what happens when we do this in our zoning laws is that we encourage every subdivision to access 9W and creating more in and out traffic through 9W. There's plenty of dead-end streets also accessing off 9W that could have been connected to existing subdivisions. I think that we need to consider how we're building, that each section newly built has to relate to an old section. There's even sections, subdivisions that have gates that are designed for the fire trucks to cut open so that fire trucks can have access between subdivision, but pedestrians cannot and vehicles cannot. I think if what we're doing is creating a pedestrian-friendly area, I think we have to reconsider how our egress and ingress into housing developments operates. The other thing was that a big opportunity was recently missed when Diamond Mills was built and no pedestrian mall was created overlooking the water. No restaurants and things like, there is every water area now being developed, like in Newburgh or in Boston or in Baltimore. And when I recommended this to the town, to the mayor, he didn't know what I was talking about. I said to him, "I'll take you. I'll take you to see these places." He says, "Oh, no, I'm too old to travel." So what I want you to know is that there's, we missed a view shed to overlook the waterfall. Wouldn't it be nice to go on a dusk and watch the water flowing over the fall without having to go through Diamond Mills, without, or be able to eat dinner overlooking a promenade? That was an opportunity missed. Another opportunity is that there are local products being developed in this areas. There's a shale aggregate that can be put into concrete that's lightweight and inexpensive to transport and we're not even consulting them when we need shale. I can talk to you about affordable housing, but I'm sure someone else will talk about that. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that there are towns like Fall River where they encourage the labeling of existing historical houses, even if they've been already renovated and don't look historical, but the type of the house, who was the original owner and what he did for a living is labeled on the house and research is done through a local high school group or a local college group and they are paid by the owner for the label on their house. And it's a beautiful historical system and also neighborhoods can be labeled, you know, like Brooklyn Heights, Park Slope. A group of realtors get together and they decide they're going to call this Cobble Hill and all of a sudden the prices go up. Why not think about our area as its historical neighborhood and to give it demarcations and labeling and better e, entryway and exitway out of town labeling with the names of the organizations that are here, Rotary and Lions and things that say, "Hey, welcome to sunny Sargades," or whatever like that. I could talk forever.
Phyllis, time is up.
Thank you.
Sorry, but the address is 39 Warren Meyer Lane. I can't read the handwriting there. Oh, Ed. Yes. And then Ed will be followed by Erica Guerin.
My name is Edward Reisner and I live on Warren Meyer Lane, which is over by Mountain area in the town. And the comprehensive plan expresses quite local sentiments about encouraging the historic nature of the community. Many other people who've spoken tonight and who probably will speak also want to preserve that as being one of the primary, if not the primary attractions of this area to potential new businesses and new residences. However, the plan doesn't discuss what that is. Traditionally, we're talking single-family owner-occupied housing. And in fact, the Ulster County Planning Department did a survey and approximately 70, over 75% of the housing units in Sargades are in fact, single-family owner-occupied homes, which then you get to the question, how many of the rental, of those rentals, what do you have? And it turns out that Sargades actually has the second highest number of subsidized housing units in the entire county behind only Kingston. That is not the traditional housing plan that this community was founded on. And if you go through the comprehensive plan, you will see that notwithstanding the goal of encouraging the historic type of thing, there are several inconsistent statements. For example, on page 34, there's the recommendation to encourage the use of clustering where appropriate. But clustering is a concept that only comes up when you're talking about large-scale developments. You don't have to worry about clustering if you're talking about single-family homes. There's also on page 39, the reference to keep the, investigate methods to promote a broad range of housing development while maintaining a ratio of rental versus ownership and proportion of subsidized housing that is consistent with the ratio and proportions of other similar towns and villages in Ulster County. We already have, as I said, the second highest number of subsidized units in the county. We have far more than our fair share of subsidized housing units. And there, you know, the plan should make it clear that if you want to maintain that, you can eliminate these references to things that are totally inconsistent with the goal of maintaining the historic aspects of the community. And finally, I want to say that this town has also recently, as I understand it, granted a pilot for a subsidized housing project. Now pilots are perfectly useful and necessary things to encourage business development that brings some kind of fiscal benefit to the community. I don't see the point of offering tax benefits to someone who will bring in subsidized housing that in fact places a burden on the other taxpayers in the community. So I think that the plan is going to, so the plan has some very good laudable things. There's some inconsistencies, however, among the recommendations. I'll submit some more formal suggestions, but that's in one area and I would counsel the present legislative body that's running the Town and Village of Sargades to try to restrain themselves from taking actions that are totally inconsistent with the comprehensive plan that has yet to be adopted. Thank you.
Good evening. Bear with me, I'm not used to my glasses yet. My name is Erica Guerin. I live at 268 Blue Mountain Road in Sargades. I live in the town. I'm sure everyone knows my dad was Ernie Fick and with my family, we own 10 different properties in Sargades. I own my residence with my husband as well as multiple residential housing, an industrial site on Mountain Turnpike, and one of, probably one of the most beautiful properties on Blue Mountain Road is a 65-acre farm, which is runs, which has the Platte Hill and the Lucas Hill running through it. I want to put my comments in those, in this context so that you understand where I'm coming from. And also, I'm speaking solely as a resident of Sargades and a taxpayer. I have another capacity that I serve in Ulster County and I want to make it very clear. I'm coming here on my own condition. Most of my practice, I am an attorney here in Sargades. I operate out of my dad's old building on 212 and most of my practice involves real estate. I represent banks, buyers and sellers, commercial buildings, landlords, tenants. My life is real estate. So where you're talking about it in an esoteric matter, a manner, I talk about it every day, hands-on. I just want to talk to you specifically about some of the things that are freaking me out about this comprehensive management plan. First and foremost, on page 26, 1.7, enforce local laws that require people to maintain their private property. I would suggest that at least add reasonably. You know, in the law, we have a standard called reasonable person. What would a reasonable person expect on the circumstances? I'm freaked out about this particular provision because many of the people that I see are facing foreclosure. I talked to the town board about the zoning law back in 2007 because I foresaw what was going to happen and we haven't, what's going to, what was going to happen with the mortgage industry and we still haven't seen the end of the foreclosure situation. It was put on a stop because of the federal litigation that was taking place, but that's now been lifted. Before that went into effect, Ulster County was the number one foreclosure, had the number, had number one in the state of foreclosures. Okay? So the problem is, is that people are barely able to maintain, pay their taxes, maintain food on their table and take care of themselves. So my only thing is I would ask that we try to put the reasonable person standard here because people are having a hard time. One of the things on page 34, 6.6, encourage the development of light industries and offices and designated locations, which brings me also to all of the recommendations in section Where do I begin? One of the things I think is funny is on 9.10, want to work with commercial property owners to explore funding surface, funding sources for public space improvements and quitting in public restrooms. Who's going to maintain the public restrooms? Just want to ask that question. Adopt performance standards to ensure new business is compatible with which brings me also to all of the recommendations in section nine. Where do I begin? One of the things I think is funny is on 9.10, want to work with commercial property owners to explore funding surface, funding sources for public space improvements and quitting in public restrooms. Who's going to maintain the public restrooms? Just want to ask that question. Adopt performance standards to ensure new business is compatible with nearby land uses and community character. That's 9.12, which goes with my ultimate favorite here, 9.8, where, 9.8, which says to attract appropriate businesses. Who's going to decide what an appropriate business is? I look at this comprehensive management plan, and I agree it's laudable, and your efforts are, I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into it. But if we don't start bringing in business, we're going to, no one, there's, we're going to have nothing. And we need to have somebody to help pay for all of this because who's going to pay for it? So I just want to plant it in your, plant that, those seeds in your head because my sister and I, my husband, and all of our friends, we've tried to do everything we can to encourage business. You know, I'll be happy to talk to you about some of the things that we do. I don't stand up in front of everybody because honestly, it's not my style. But you know, we do our best to try to bring things here to Sorgerties because I love this town. But if things don't get better tax-wise and so on, my husband and I are actually talking about moving to Tennessee. Because why stay here if we can't afford to live here and have a decent life? I just want to take, I hope you'll think about that. And also, Sam, I promise you I'd bring up wood. Can we please add wood to being able, as a sustainable energy? Thank you.
Naomi Rothberg, followed by Sue Rosenberg.
Hi, I'm Naomi Rothberg. I live in the town on Charles Hummel Road for 37 years. And I'm, I'm, I think, oh, I'm sorry. I do think you've done a great job, and I know how difficult this is. I wanted to speak specifically about the diversifying economic goal nine and specifically, more specifically, 920, which is permit the development of gaming casinos only after analysis that demonstrates significant positive fiscal benefit to the town and village and its residents of just property taxes and job creation, and demonstration that negative social and environmental impacts are fully mitigated. This is, this is, for one thing, I don't know why any specific business is mentioned here. It's the only specific business that's mentioned in the economic-based goals. But it seems to me that this utterly ties the hands of some future board. If somebody comes in and promises, "Oh, we're going to lower your taxes by a huge amount. We're going to create hundreds of jobs here." They make those promises. This requires the board to accept the casino. And the business of demonstration that negative social and environmental impacts are fully mitigated is simply a nonsense phrase. You can't demonstrate that in advance. When the other casino was coming, presenting its plan to the board, they said they expected 21,000 people a day. That is double the population of Sorgerties. How does that comport with traffic congestion plans? How are you going to mitigate in advance unless you totally revamp all the roads in this town? How are you going to mitigate in advance for the traffic, for the traffic accidents, for the new police you're going to need, for the emergency vehicles? And that's just to address the traffic aspect, which is huge. But then you've got study after study which shows what happens to people who live near casinos. And that there are many ill effects, but one of them is increasing in gambling addiction, and among the most vulnerable groups are teenagers. How are you going to mitigate in advance? What are you going to do, set up the clinics now? And how does that mitigate? And mitigate completely? How do you mitigate completely gambling addiction? How do you mitigate completely, okay, the kind of traffic and other impacts that would be created? The impacts on the government? The every, the impacts are unmitigatable. And so the sentence makes absolutely no sense and contradicts much of what else is in this plan.
Hi, my name is Sue Rosenberg. I've lived in West Sorgerties for over 30 years. I spent a good quarter today trying to read through the comprehensive plan, but don't, I'm not as knowledgeable as many of the people who've spoken today about the specifics. But let me tell you my, my impression. I want to thank you for the conscientiousness of the work you've done and for bringing this plan to this community. I was initially drawn to West Sorgerties by the beauty of the river and the mountains and the warmth of this small-town feel. And I feel very fortunate that it remains. We live in a time when it's not easy to maintain the richness and character of towns like ours with the pressures of economic growth and sometimes a very narrow definition of what progress means. So it was wonderful to see you put the needs of present, of the present planning and our future planning in a historical perspective to see where we've come from. And that so many of your recommendations were about finding ways to protect our greatest resources, the clean water, the clean air, the creeks, the rivers, and the mountains while establishing guidelines and parameters for growth, which will be inevitable. And to include emphasis on continuing to find ways for our community made up of so many groups and interests to communicate and work together. I was really impressed that that was a piece in the plan. Goal one seems to include the need for collaboration and the need to enforce rules that maintain the common needs of our community. I really appreciated goal five of looking, of maintaining a small-town and historic nature of our community. In many ways, this is vital to the quality of life and the value of our lives and of our property. It's that quaint and friendly Sorgerties which brings people here. It grows the kind of tourism that really nourishes and enhances our community. In goal 10, you talked about utility and energy efficiency. So I was glad to see an awareness that development of infrastructure and utilities must be coupled with energy efficiency and the development and use of renewable resources. I would like to see much more emphasis and much more specific plans about how we're going to get there so that this town could really be a leader in the future of safe and renewable energies. Goal nine, as other people have said, have some things in it that I find problematic. And one of them is that 9.19 that talks about supporting existing and new businesses with a wide range of services and retail opportunities. And it says businesses of all sides are, sizes are encouraged when they offer employment opportunities to the town. That certainly, as a lot of people have said, opens the doors, I think, a very dangerous possibility of big stores like Walmarts coming into town. We did see when I first moved up here, the small shops in Sorgerties were closed down or only antique stores there because the mall had come in. So I know this town will not benefit by huge Walmarts or other things. And I also agree that the possibility of a casino here is potentially a real disaster, and it should not be part of our plan. So thank you.
I want to, we appreciate everybody keeping their conversations down so that all the speakers can be heard. It is being recorded and stenographers as well. And we appreciate your cooperation in that so that everybody gets a chance to hear. So the next speaker will be Vicki. I think it's Dross. Forgive me if it's 33, 332 Tanilville Road.
Yeah, it's okay. A moderator can be celebrated.
Okay. I think it's Frank, 140 Elm Street. Is that Frank? Is it Villa? Are you going to speed, Frank?
No.
I know some folks signed in thinking they weren't speeding. Virginia Lupino is the next one on the list. Followed by Lanny Walter.
My name is Virginia Lupino. I live here in the village of Sorgerties. I have a few short comments about goal 14 that refers to climate change. In this, it says that to minimize the impacts of climate change on the town's natural and agricultural resources. But in the recommendations, it doesn't really give any specifics about how we might protect our agricultural resources. So I'd like to see that addressed a little bit better. And another thing that I'd like to see addressed with, in terms of climate change is as we get, as the science currently predicts that we're going to have very wet fall through spring and followed by seasons of drought every summer. And we're already starting to experience that, which I think might lead us to have to consider water storage capabilities in the future, especially as we expand our water to King's Highway and places like that. Like to be really important that we have enough water to get us through the dry period. But that's it, man. Thanks so much for all the work you've done on this.
My name is Lanny Walter. I live in West Sorgerties on Van Leeuwen Road. And the committee, which I was a part of at one time, is to be credited for continuing to reinforce the land use values in our community that will, if adhered to, sustain the quality of life in Sorgerties. Sorgerties would avoid becoming overcrowded, congested by traffic, suffering from air pollution, and will continue to enjoy good quality water. Sorgerties will continue to have a rural environment with open spaces and access to the mountains and waterways. The plan recognizes that the Winston Farm will remain an important economic asset to the community. Now, your goal number one, to find the quality of life, I won't read it, but it's in the plan. You know what it says, and it basically encourages a healthful environment, particularly youth involvement in the community. Goal number five encourages development compatible with the current development in the community. Goal number six, particularly focused on Winston Farm, which is identified as suitable for technological development with complementary supporting development. In conflict with these goals, another set forth in the plan is recommend, recommendation 9.20, which invites a gaming casino. The Winston Farm had previously been targeted for casino, and the community rose up and declared that it did not want such an enterprise in its midst. State is moving toward a constitutional amendment, which if passed, would permit the development of up to seven casinos in the state, including possibly in Sorgerties. There is good reason to fear that casino developers will resume eyeing the Winston Farm. Such a development will be totally out of character with our small-town status. It will result in a dramatic increase in our crime rate. The gambler and his family and friends will suffer from introduction of casinos in the community. Youth are particularly susceptible to this supposedly easy money as distinct from learning how to work hard to earn their living. A casino will not be compatible with the honesty and community affairs that the plan sanctions. And there are many stories of people who work for governments who can't control themselves, end up taking public funds to feed their habit. We will all be a victim of this. That exactly thing happens in Foxborough. Casinos will suck the money and investments out of local establishments who have struggled for years to build up valuable businesses. Instead of our entertainment dollars being used to sustain our village and hamlet centers, our money will pour into the casinos, and the tourists who come to Sorgerties will have no inducement to leave the lavish halls of the casino to patronize all the businesses. If we encourage casino development, Sorgerties and casino development takes up this invitation, we might as well forget about the rest of the comprehensive plan because Sorgerties, as we know it, will cease to exist. Its friendly reputation, which we take such pride, will be clouded over by the pursuit of easy money, prostitution, and criminal activity. I strongly recommend that recommendation 9.2 be struck from this draft. In the same way the plan rejects a landfill in this community, recommendation 10.6, we are not to welcome casino development. Let me check. I have a written statement, and I will hand it up to you. And there are a few other comments, and I also noted two typos.
Melinda Herzog, followed by Avery Herzog. Melinda Herzog. Donna Greco. Donna Greco, followed by Antoinette Bad.
Hi, good evening. I started to go through this comprehensive plan, probably similar to the rest of you, and I found that it was really big and really thick. So it took a long time to look through it. But the interesting thing is, is I sort of got stuck on page one. And that's because page one tells me who wrote it. And when I did a little research and I looked to see who it was that wrote this, it was in part through a grant from the Hudson River Valley Greenway. So I thought, what is the Hudson River Valley Greenway? Got on my computer and did a little research. And I found another huge thing to read called "The Politics of Land Use Reform in New York." Land use reform? Why are we reforming our land use? So, excuse me, I have so many papers here. So what is the Hudson Valley River Greenway? And why are they changing our land use? What I found is that 1,600 units of local government and about 30,000 players, political and quasi-political, participate in land use planning and a zoning game. They call it a game. Why is it a game? It's a game because it's to get us to agree to change our land use and zoning so as to pave the way for smart growth. So what is smart growth? All these new terms are making my head spin. The only thing smart about smart growth is the deceptive name, used only to make it sound like it's an intelligent choice, when it's, in reality, it's far from anything smart. Smart growth is an urban planning and transportation plan that concentrates growth in compact, walkable urban centers. It advocates compact, now the term compact comes up a lot, mixed-use residential and commercial areas designed to maximize access to public transport surrounded by relatively high-density development, where they encourage walkable, again, bicycle-friendly land use. The roads are purposefully narrowed to discourage the use of vehicles, which will eventually be eliminated and replaced by buses. Your mobility, your mobility will be strictly limited. All of your affordable housing units will be located in these sustainable mixed-use communities, of which Sorgerties is quickly becoming, based on the comprehensive plan and the affordable housing-friendly atmosphere that attracts all the developers. The plan is for us to live in an affordable housing unit, likely 200 to 400 square feet. And they're already designing furniture for these little tiny apartments with beds that will double as a kitchen table. You think I'm kidding? If we adopt this plan, soon you will all be riding your bike to work, and your kids will be biking to school. And I wonder how that's going to go over in the winter months. The term smart growth is mostly used in North America, but other areas call it, call it compact city and urban intensification. These concepts have influenced government planning policies all over the world, and now locally here in Sorgerties. There's more to the Hudson Valley River Greenway. I don't think I have enough time to go into it, but there's a lot of information about it. But the word sustainable development sounds all pretty, but it's a masked mask used to get people to accept the idea of controlled use of land, and the language is deceitful. Another thing I found out might be interesting is that our former supervisor of Sorgerties is now appointed to the Greenway Council. Okay? By Mike Hyde. He's part of this. He's the one who's behind it. And we worked really hard to get him out of office because he was bringing all this affordable housing to our area. our area. And now he's on the Greenway Council.
Excuse me, could you address your comments to a specific goal in the plan? You don't have that many.
Well, I don't, I'm just saying that this is who wrote this plan. This plan is written by council, not by our town.
This plan was written by the people who are sitting up here. Greenway provided funding. Yes, we did. This is two years of work.
Other plans and they, they speak exactly pretty much the same. They're all the same. They're not anything different. But that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Antoinette Bad?
My name is Antoinette Bad. I'm a resident of one twenty-five West Bridge Street since nineteen thirty-five. The first thing I did, I looked at the title of the comprehensive plan and I called the supervisor's office this morning to ask, did the man who was in charge live here? And I was told, no, he wasn't. He doesn't live here. They, they didn't know where he lived, but he doesn't live in Sorgdies. And I thought, well, that's interesting. So he's in charge and he's telling us all the things we have to do and he doesn't have to apply to him. It doesn't apply to him. It applies to us. And I thought that was odd. Then on page eleven, the sixth paragraph, the center from the bottom, mentions impact of increased taxes to taxpayers as building increases to cover increased population, putting strain on the police, the firemen, and the schools. And further on, I think it's the next page, I forgot to put the number down. It refers to the total use of water and sewer, already using the entire resources. So how can we support all the apartments that investors are flocking to build in Sorgdies if we don't have enough water for that? Page twenty-three is strictly community oriented. Since there's no mention of any individuals, without individuals, we don't have a community. So what are we talking about? Fair land? And page thirty-four, number sixty-eight encourages the use of clustering. How much space does this provide to the individual? And I'd like to ask a question. Of all the people who worked on this plan, how many live in a clustered environment? And if they don't live in one at this time, how many are willing to live in one in the future? I want you to think about that because clustering, you know, the, the apartments are not foolproof. So if one apartment starts making a lot of noise, the apartment above, below, and on either side is going to hear it. And before you know it, they're all going to get into power, noise. And you're not going to have nice smiley people. You're going to have grim people living in these apartments. And page thirty-eight refers to changing the individual homes into apartments, putting an apartment over the garage, and then cluster homes. Again, I, I really think you need to think about, we are individuals. We like some space. I certainly would not want to live in a clustered apartment. That means you've got to have somebody like gar- not the garbage, the, the people that come and clean your house because you got bugs. And you're going to get them in a clustered home, I can guarantee it.
Bob Morales. Bob still here?
Yeah.
And that's the last name on the signing sheet. Is there anyone else who want, that had been signed up that did want to speak? Bob?
Thank you. My name is Bob Morales. Fifty-two years old. I've lived in Sorgdies over thirty years, longer than any other place I've lived. But this is my home. My kids were all born in Sorgdies and I really like Sorgdies. I have somewhat of a problem with a called comprehensive plan. I appreciate the work that people have contributed to the comprehensive plan to kind of modify it. But I do agree with some of the other people that have spoken that the plan itself, the outline, the substance, the, the goals, the implementation, did not come from Sorgdies the way it, the way it was structured, okay? It was, we paid about twenty thousand dollars to somebody to get this plan. At the last, not sure, we paid a consultant and they have an outline of the plan and they say, okay, how do you want to fix it to fit your community? Well, the basic plan is what I'm against. We maybe need a master plan. That would be nice, okay? But we don't need a comprehensive plan. We don't want to be controlled by bureaucracies and people telling us what to do, either planning or building. Safety, okay? You know, normal stuff like we've been doing all these years. That's fine. But comprehensive, read the detail. I, I only got through about sixty percent of this and I'm saying, this is really, I think we should, I'm going to get a lot of grief in this. Scrap it and start from all over from people that live here, okay? Again, I'm not denigrating any of the work that the people have added or tried to modify it or anything like that. Obviously, we're trying to modify it, but how do you, you know, you know, how do you make a fake look nice? You know, put lipstick on it. It doesn't work, you know? Last week, we had a meeting here from Sacred, Sorgdies, how was that from Sorgdies? Citizens for Responsible Economic Growth. And I brought up some items and, and I'm not going to stop bringing these items up because this is where it has come from. Back in nineteen ninety-four, the Agenda Twenty-One, people think, oh, it's a big conspiracy theory and all this stuff. Well, what I'd like, I have some handouts here. If anybody can pick them up, you don't have to. I'll leave them over there on the table. Compare what Agenda Twenty-One states and is. Just compare that to what the plan says. Do it on your own, think about it, and then you, you have an idea of what I'm talking about. Last week I was here, I just jotted down some things. I'm not, okay, I just want to say this quickly. Our plan should, should be concentrate on this. Communities have no rights. Individuals have rights. That's in our constitution, okay? Humans take priority over species, not the other way around. We should remove all language that subordinates individual human rights. These are constitutional and they are God-given. No property in our town should be off limits to humans. We should promote single-family homeownership, which is our best tax base. Unaffordable housing, we should toss out. You've got eighty, ninety kids in this new development, maybe more. Think about it. How many teachers do we need? They have four hundred dollars per unit per year times fifty-five units is twenty-two thousand dollars a year in taxes. How much does one teacher make in Sorgdies? Can we afford one teacher? How about three teachers? That's thirty students per teacher. How about another copper two? How about some of this other stuff? That's ridiculous. It's, it's, how about they should pay their fair share, what they keep telling us to do. They, the developers should pay their fair share, okay? I'd like to promote economically feasible, non-subsidized alternate, alternative energy, non-subsidized. That would be great. If it's, if it's feasible economically, that's great. And I have a little bit more, but that's about it. My time is up. Thank you very much.
Just come up and say your name, please, for the record.
Thank you.
My name is Bernard Bolitzer. I'm a resident of Sorgdies. I want to apologize for not being here earlier so I could listen more carefully, but I wanted to have a couple of comments. One of the great problems in economic planning is fashion. That is, schools of architecture and designers start to worry about the fashion of the time. What is current in the airport? So the movement to have the, the breakdown between farm and city change with planning was a nineteen twenties concept from Britain. That's what they thought. That's what the future would bring. And so people get wedded to a concept and an approach. I want to start off noting that there's something very old-fashioned about all of this kind of planning. Not, it's not that it's bad, but it's old-fashioned. For example, people get concerned about the big box stores and their, their wreckage they placed on the university, on the area. I think that's probably true, but the big box stores are all going broke. You understand that JCPenney is probably going broke and most of the distributors of other kinds of good in the mall are out of shape. So don't worry so much about having a gambling institution going to Winston Farm, having to worry about a secondary use for the mall. JCPenney goes broke and you, somebody proposes to bring in gambling to the mall where the parking is already there, the space is already there, the sequence is already there. That's something really to be concerned about. It's not big boxes that you have to worry about. They're going away. Something else coming in. Now, I'm against gambling, not because it doesn't, because it gives income to the town. I, I don't know if it does or not. The odds are all mixed. Gambling is bad for the morality of the people, so I'm against it. I, I really am against having too many bars for the same reason. I'm an old Puritan. It's looking to night smoking pot in the city streets and all the rest of that stuff. I think it's bad for the public. I don't want towns to do it just to make money. I don't want the mall to have a gambling casino just because it yields tax revenues. I, I proceed from a different position. Now, planning is hard. Will everybody understand that? It's very hard to do. Businessmen plan and they often go broke. That's pretty bad, but at least they have some skin in the game. When towns misstate on plans and they go broke, their losses are taken up by the taxpayers of the community. It's just difficult to do well. But it's easy to do it using fashionable thought, what feels right. There's an impulse, I hate to say this, because I share the disease, an antiquarian impulse. We want to repeat whatever it was in the past, but whatever was in the past disappeared. There was a time when the five and ten cents store was the big revolutionary thing and replaced the neighborhood shop. I don't know if that was good or bad, but it happened. It happens. The pressure of commerce and of technology is very strong and trying to outthink it because you have a local group of good-hearted people is not easy to do. Now, I'm not worried about some things that other people are worried about. I like multiple housing. I lived in apartment houses. I don't care. And this business is about cockroaches and you have multiple cars. That's all bullshit. I don't need that stuff. I have lived under all sorts of circumstances and people are people. But, but what is a problem is if you have difficulty in administrating your town by giving either excessive salaries or excessive pensions or whatever it is, so the town goes broke. That's a real problem. Planning, the fantasy planning of a garden city, I don't care about.
Thanks, Bernie. We have, we have, thank you for speaking.
One more thing. You want to speak?
Susan Bolz.
You want to speak too?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kat Reynolds and I'm from Sorgdies. And I have my concerns about Sorgdies, especially for fracking. I've been here a few times talking about it and hoping that the town would have an ordinance against it because I feel that we will probably have a town if fracking comes and, and it destroys our wells because you can't have motels open if you don't have good water to take showers. People in Pennsylvania who have been affected by it can't take showers. They can't do their laundry. They don't have any water to drink. So if we don't start doing something, people will move out of our town. Who's going to want to stay here? And some people won't be able to move out because they can't afford to. But where are your taxes going to come from? If we don't get a ban, if we don't get ordinance in place soon, we don't know what Governor Como is going to, to do next. Now, in this month's National Geographic, there's a whole story about America Strikes Oil. In South Dakota, they have like ten thousand wells and they expect if it keeps on going, they'll have fifty-five thousand. And it says, "The Promise and Risks of Fracking." So I think you should read it. I think if you don't believe that anything's going to bother us, go to Pennsylvania. My sister did. And the people in Rochester, the Rochester Group, they have, they're getting their ordinance all in place and they would, now it's in place, I believe. And they're willing to help us. And I've made calls, my sister made calls, to people here in Sorgdies. And I haven't heard of a hearing yet. And if we don't get on the stick and get something going, I'm really concerned. Because restaurants can't even stay open if they don't have water to wash dishes and if they can't give you a decent drink of water. So restaurants can't stay open, hotels can't stay open, and you have to carry water to your house even to wash your hair and your clothes. You have to go drive miles away to do a, a different laundromat. It isn't funny. So I'm hoping, I, I didn't see anything, I haven't read the whole thing and I apologize, but I haven't heard of anything being prepared in this con, this thing that you just proposed about, anything about fracking. So I hope that the town will start doing something very soon. Soon. What?
It is in the plan?
Oh, good. I'm glad that it's in the plan. That makes me happy. But we have to, we have to do something as fast as possible because it might be too late or end.
My name is Vicky and I yield a back to four. But I did want to speak concerning this plan. You know, when I think about and I look around the room and I see all these individual lives and everybody's life is different. And, you know, we have to look at things that, why is it always that the answer to one extreme is to swing all the way to another extreme? And I think that there has to be a balance. The comprehensive plan, well-meaning as it is, it seems, it has a little taste of activism. And, and I believe that when you think about religion, religion is a concept of a belief system, okay? When we take a belief system and we start to take it and we start to make it seem as though that belief system, it overrides everybody's feelings about any other thing, then that's activism. We cannot have a town that's run by activism. It has to be run with common sense, with, with dignity, with understanding, with, with caring for people and one another's ideas. Otherwise, the town is nothing but us versus them. And that's not harmony. People talk about harmony with the earth and harmony with the environment. If you don't have harmony in the town amongst people, there's a problem. So we need to strike a balance between people caring for the environment and not overriding practical principles for the homeowner. It can't, one can't be over the other because otherwise it's nothing but activism and it's another form of religion. And so I just think about how long the earth was here before the comprehensive plan came into place. I mean, we were able to live, how many years has Sorgdies been in existence and Sorgdies has been able to survive before the comprehensive plan came? We knew how to handle our water. We knew how to grow gardens. We knew, now... We knew how to handle our water, we knew how to grow gardens, we knew, now, we don't have a brain in our head, we have to have people dictate, tell us, and enforce how we should live, in our own homes. And, you know, there's extremism. I'm telling you, there was a highway renovation that was going on, and they stopped it dead. Millions of, millions of dollars, this was a million-dollar project. They stopped it dead because they found a little tunnel with a spider the size of a dime, and somebody said it was an endangered species. All the people had to drive all out of their way, because of all kinds of traffic problems, but this is what I'm talking about. We lived with bugs, how many bugs do we step on? We don't even realize it, we don't mean to. But there has to be a common sense approach to us being able to live, and the environment being able to exist, and us striking that balance. That'll be doing.
Hi, my name is Susan Bolitzer. I've lived here 15 years, and it's the longest that I've lived anyplace in my life. And I love it here, I think it's a wonderful town. I'd just like to say something, I was on the town comprehensive plan for about three years. It was a, it was a committee with a lot of various opinions representing a lot of parts of the town. And people came together and discussed things, and agreed things, agreed about things. I never felt that it was, that it was one group, and you're making decisions for the whole town. I'd like to thank this group here that's worked on it, I'd like to thank the people in the village comprehensive town planning committee and the town, I know how much hard work it is. We had a consultant, the consultant did not do the work, it was hard work. I used to sit there and be in great admiration of my colleagues who were going out and researching things, having meetings in between our meetings, that were taking, you know, a lot of their time, and it's a lot of hard work, and I'd just like to thank everybody for that, and I very, very much appreciate all the work it's done. Thank you very much.
My name's Patty Kelly, I've lived up on Hockeville Road for over 30 years. I wasn't going to speak, but I just don't think it's really proper for any of us to leave here with some of the misconceptions that were said within the past half hour. As a citizen and of this town, I have attended your committee meetings over the years, different personnel over the years, but there's always been a consistency of the purpose. As a member of the town's green energy task force, I actually appeared before your committee to talk about sustainable energy and other matters, which I'm very grateful have appeared in the plan. But the one thing that I want people to understand is, you wrote this plan. I have come to your meetings over the years, I have watched you labor for hours over the wording of a particular paragraph, to make sure that you're all in agreement with it. The idea that you didn't do the work, that somebody, and I don't know who that person was referring to, that doesn't live in Sogertes, but if you're referring to Dan Schuster, who has been the planner for this town for as many years as I can remember, who probably spends more time in this town than anywhere else, that he is somehow not qualified to advise this committee, was just personally upsetting. You did a great job, you have work yet to do, but I thank you, and I thank you for the work that you put into it. One last thing, we have had a comprehensive plan in this town since the 1990s. The fact that people here don't seem to even realize that they have lived under a comprehensive plan is astounding. Thank you.
Gary Mishoff, I was not going to speak either, but I heard a lot of misconceptions. I just want to touch on one thing, cluster housing. Everybody thinks cluster housing is so bad, we have some excellent examples of cluster housing in this town now. Think about Twin Maples, think about Burches, think about Cantine Island. It's a way of clustering the development to preserve open space on the big tract of land. And I think it's a good thing, and it should be encouraged. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Harrison. The plan shows that there are 63 people added to the village since 2000, probably the 63rd. So I just wanted to say, you know, I'm a new resident here, I understand these processes, you've got the like degrees in architecture, and I did subordinate studies in urban planning, and going through a comprehensive plan is an important thing for a community to do. It's, you know, you guys should feel proud about what you're trying to do, and it's an important process you go through. I would say, in this plan, one of the things that strikes me is, it's not clear what's descriptive, what's prescriptive. And the prescriptive is buried in the descriptive, to the point that it's almost hard to read. In one point, I want to point out one thing, which I think I've heard a dozen times tonight, and it's kind of close to my heart, which is this point 920 about casino gambling. It's just a very odd way to put this word. Every other part of this document talks about support, and adopting, and encouraging, and establishing, and this one says permit. It's very odd, it's very odd, because it's establishing an already decision, almost in a way, it's voiced. It's actually just staying in its decision. Instead, it should say, "We support the analysis of this thing." I understand that, that's perfectly valid, you should do the analysis, you should support the analysis, if you think that's a viable thing to grow the community, that's great. But the way it's phrased just seems terribly inadequate, or terribly inappropriate. And I'll say, while I think it's very important, I grew up in the bayous of Louisiana, in the deep south, and around New Orleans and Baton Rouge in the late 1990s, we went through a whole phrase where we made gambling legal everywhere. And it literally destroyed the entire state. It got to the point where it destroyed socially and economically the state so badly that it came about that they actually forced the government to cause a vote to basically eliminate gambling throughout the state. And 90% of the people voted to eliminate it after seven years of it destroying our community. Today, it's limited to a very, very limited usage within New Orleans and Baton Rouge. It's very important, because I think that if you do consider it like that, there may be reasons why it isn't necessary, but it has to be well considered, it has to be thought out very, very effectively. Thank you.
Anyone else that's wanting to speak, that didn't get a chance?
Can I just say one thing? I thought gambling, I thought we all voted on gambling, some, a few years ago, a few years back. And I thought we, the town decided that we were not going to have gambling here.
We did have more.
So why are we, why is that even in there now?
Why are we even talking about it?
Your name?
Oh, Joyce Swaffer. Joyce Swaffer.
You want to speak to the?
No, I just want you to know why.
I thought, my name is Joyce Swaffer. I just thought, everybody's talking about gambling, but we voted against gambling some years ago. We went to the polls, and we voted on it. So if we voted for it, and it's gone, why put it back in here now?
Nobody voted on that.
Town board voted on, people did not vote on gambling. Well, there's a big difference. Put it up to the people, let the people decide. Very simple.
All right. And to summarize this evening, I'd just like to remind everyone that you can submit comments in writing, or basically email them until the 29th of March. I've asked Dan Schuster, Dan, many of you, if you've been to the planning board, you know Mr. Schuster with Schuster Associates. He is basically taking the homework that we do, and put together at our monthly meetings, and has been, puts what, the graphics with Alan together, and puts this, let's say, in a readable form. And I've asked Dan to kind of summarize what the next steps are going to be for the committee. This, I thank everybody again for coming, this is an ongoing process, and Dan will tell you what the next steps are, that you will definitely be involved with. Dan?
Just briefly, so you know where the process is, we're coming to essentially the end of the first stage of the comprehensive plan process. The comprehensive plan committee, which is sitting before you tonight, was appointed by the town and village boards, has spent over two years preparing this plan for consideration by the public at a public hearing, which we're doing tonight, and will receive comments for the next two weeks. The next step is for the comprehensive plan committee to consider all of the comments that have been made, make any modifications to the plan that they feel are appropriate, and recommend to the town board, this plan, or a revised version of this plan, for the town board to consider for adoption.
And the village board.
And the village board, sorry. The town and village boards both will consider a plan for approval. They also, each will have a public hearing on the plan that they received from this committee, or a plan that they modify based on their own research, their own hearings. That, at that point, if the town and village boards determine that they should adopt a plan, that will be the end of the process. So there's significant steps still to come.
Is there a timeframe on that?
Not specifically, the town board can deliberate as it chooses.
All right, well, stay tuned to TV 23 for updates, as far as when the next hearings will be held. Please take the time, if you haven't read the document, to review it online. There is a copy, there's copies in the library in bound notebooks, so you can also see it there. And I thank everyone for coming, have a safe trip home. Good night now, thank you.